Good afternoon. My name is Jason Chavez and I'm the Chair of the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to call to order a regular committee meeting for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members, staff, and the public that these meetings are broadcast live to enable greater public participation. These broadcasts include real-time captioning as a further method to increase accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Payne.
Present.
Wonsley.
Present.
Rainville.
Present.
Vita.
Present.
Ellison is absent. Osman.
Present.
Cashman.
Present.
Jenkins is absent. Chuck Type is absent. Koski.
Present.
Palmasano.
Present.
Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Present.
And Chair Chavez.
Present.
There are 10 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we start with the consent agenda, we will begin by with our standing committee reports. We'll first begin with the Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee chaired by Councilmember Wonsi.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward 22 items. The first is a gift acceptance from Cities Today Institute for lodging and meal expenses. Two is a bid for public sidewalk snow and ice removal. Three is a bid for Target Center steam station improvements. Four is a bid for a freely softening plant lime system replacement. Five is a bid for Lindell Avenue North Traffic Control Signal Systems and Storm Sewer pedestrian curb ramps improvements project. Six is a master contract for eligible providers of workforce development services for 2026 through 2028. Seven is a contract with Kodak Architectural Group for architecture and engineering services for the carpenter and mechanic shop on the Freely Water Treatment Campus. Eight is contract amendment with Hagen Adams P L L C for after-action reviews and reports. Nine is contract amendment with Shehe Construction Company for lighting replacement and Target Center escalator lobby. Ten is contract amendment with Tyzek Concrete Inc. for the Phillips Traffic Safety Project. Eleven is contract amendment with Bolton and Mink Inc. for engineering and design services for Bridge Nine improvements project. Twelve is a contract amendment with Certified Languages International LLC for remote interpreting services. Thirteen is contract amendments with multiple vendors for community trauma response services. Fourteen is contract amendments with various immigration legal services providers. Fifteen is contracts with various organizations for partnership engagement fund projects. Sixteen is cooperative funding agreement with the Minnesota Historical Society for the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board. Seventeen is Minneapolis Advisory Committee on People with Disabilities appointments. Eighteen is 2025 property tax special assessment of the liquid utility charges. Nineteen is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Jarrett Moore. Twenty is a legal settlement M D C R charge number 2309198. Twenty-one is a legal settlement Marian Lewis v. City of Minneapolis. And twenty-two is a gift acceptance from the Public Rights Project for conference travel lodging and meal expenses. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Council Vice President Chuck Type. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the Budget Committee chaired by Council Vice President Chuck Type.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Budget Committee is bringing forward one item for the body's consideration on Thursday, which is a passage of resolution approving the adjusted 20-year neighborhood park plan guaranteed minimum annual amounts for 2027 through 2031 due to inflation. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Seeing no one on cue, move on to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee chaired by Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Business Housing and Zoning Committee will be bringing 22 items to Thursday council meeting. Item one is approving an ordinance related to the Heritage Preservation Regulation. Item two is approving a liquor license and sidewalk cafe license for Bobby Kajun. Item three is approving an extended hour license for U Tobacco. Item four is approving an extended hour license for Sip of Silk. Item five is approving annual levies for special assessment. Item six is denying an appeal submitted by Marcia Hagenson for the property at 2821 Brookwood Terrace. Item seven is considering an appeal from 1717 developers demolished the John Cook House. This item was sent forward without recommendation. Item eight is approving three liquor license. Item nine is approving seven liquor license renewals. Item 10 is approving 13 gambling license renewals. Item 11, accepting a grant from the state for dislocated workers. Item 12 is approving a decertification for three TIF districts. Item 13 is approving comprehensive plan amendment for River North Development. Item 14 is authorizing modification to the NOAA Preservation Fund. Item 15 is amending the contract with KMA Development for the property at 1200 West Broadway. Item 16 is approving a new street name for Kirk Washington Jr. submitted by Councilmember Allison. Item 17 is also approving a new street name for Chi Shiong submitted by Councilmember Allison. Item 18 is approving appropriation for demolishing two properties of the city. Item 19 is approving restated land sale for homes for homies for the Emergency Stabilization Pilot Program. Item 20 is approving for annual affordable housing trust fund award recommendation. Item 21 is approving restoration of 9% low income housing tax credit. And lastly, item 22 is approving as amended an ordinance related to signage on premises. This was approved as amended during the biz committee meeting last Thursday. With that, I will stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one on cue, we'll move on to the Climate and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee has 10 items this cycle. Item one is a resolution honoring the staff and contractors that worked on the Hennepin Avenue South Reconstruction Project. Item two is related to the First Avenue South Reconstruction Project from Franklin to Grant and has resolutions ordering the work to proceed, adopting special assessments, and requesting the Board of Estimate and Taxation authorize issuance and sale of assessment bonds and order the abandonment and removal of area ways in conflict with the project. Item three is related to Cedar Ave Reconstruction from 24th Street East to Lake Street East and has resolutions ordering the work to proceed, adopt special assessments, request the Board of Estimate and Taxation to authorize issuance and sale of assessment bonds, and order the abandonment and removal of area ways in conflict with the project. Item four is related to Lowry Ave Northeast Street Reconstruction Project Phase Two from Marshall Street Northeast to Washington Street Northeast and has similar resolutions to the past two items. Item five is authorizing a subordinate funding agreement with the Met Council for local work design and administrative costs related to the Blue Line Extension. Item six is amending 2025 capital improvement appropriation to authorize closure and appropriation adjustments for capital projects and programs, as well as reallocations and redistributions of excess funds. Item seven is authorizing a cooperative agreement with Hennepin County for Cedar Ave Reconstruction. Item eight is authorizing a utility easement with the Park Board for storm sewer and stormwater basins within Columbia Golf Course and the park. Item nine is authorizing a joint powers agreement with the Park Board for Parkway paving repair and reconstruction. And finally, item 10 is a resolution updating the price structure and rates for electric vehicle charging in the public right of way as part of the EV Spot Network pilot. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Seeing no one on cue, we'll go on to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee chaired by Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Our I G R Committee is just bringing forward for receive and file is item number one, 2026 Legislative Policy Priorities, and then item number two, a presentation on 2025 federal legislative updates.
Thank you. Seeing no one on cue, we'll lastly go to the Public Health and Safety Committee with Vice Chair Councilmember Wonsi.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. The Public Health and Safety Committee will be bringing forward two items. The first is opioid overdoses and possession of naloxone or other opiate antagonists. Two is towards zero death grant from the state of Minnesota through the City of Crystal Police Department to improve the safety of Minneapolis roads. With that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you. And there is no one on cue. So we will now go on to the consent agenda. There are three items in total on the consent agenda. Item number one is setting a public hearing for our next meeting on December 9th to consider an ordinance related to employee authority in immigration matters. Item number two is also setting a public hearing for December 9th to consider the appointment of Patrick Burns to the Ethical Practices Board. And lastly, item number three is referring to staff and ordinance related to cities government structure implementation ordinance. With that, are there any discussions from committee members? Seeing no one on cue and seeing no further discussion, I'll move to set items one and two for public hearings on December 9th at 1:30 p.m., Committee of the Whole, and refer item three to staff. On that motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion is carried. Now, moving on to discussion, we have one item, which is the resolution that adopts an enterprise policy framework. See Clerk Casey Carl is here to present more on this item for us. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. As noted, my name is Casey Carl. I have the privilege of serving as clerk for the city of Minneapolis. May it please the committee, as the chair indicated, I'm here to present a new policy framework for the city and to request your formal approval of that framework, as well as a series of related actions. To set the stage, I'll remind members, I sent out an email about this earlier, about a month ago, but in 2004, the council and mayor at that time adopted a formal policy on policies, which is set forward in Council Action Number 2004A0966. That action established a uniform process to create city policies. It authorized the formation of a policy review group to be responsible for the internal review and vetting processes of new policies, and it authorized the creation of a policy library. Unfortunately, the implementation of that vision for a uniform policy system was fumbled from almost the beginning. The PRG was reduced to an editorial role that focused primarily on correct grammar rather than substantive content. The library was largely abandoned due to lack of resources, and the policy process became more of an ad hoc choose-your-own-adventure approach rather than a consistent standard practice across the enterprise. As a consequence, it's difficult to know what policies the city has in place, the currency of those policies, and whether they remain legally effective or have potentially been replaced, and in many cases, it's challenging to locate our existing policies. Furthermore, the city's basic government structure was fundamentally changed in 2021 when voters approved the Legislative Council Executive Mayor System, which separated powers between council and mayor. And under that system, the mayor is the chief executive officer, has control over the daily operations of the city. That new structure is not reflected in the city's existing policies. Rather than address policies on a one-off basis, staff determined that an update to the essential city policy framework was a better approach so that we might update and address all policies on a more holistic go-forward basis. Over much of the past year, as we've tackled any number of other proposals and challenges, the offices of city clerk and city attorney have reviewed, revised, and updated that essential policy framework, the result of which is the guide to the city's policy framework. And a copy of that new guide was included in your briefing materials. This guide defines the various legal authorities in order which constitute the external policy framework within which the city exists and operates. It then defines the internal categories of policies and focuses on regulate, which focus on regulating and directing the operations of city government. The guide also identifies the roles and responsibilities of key stakeholders who are involved in the city's policy process. This presentation summarizes the key elements of that guide, which we request be formally adopted by city council, and to that end, a resolution has been prepared and included in your briefing materials. So you've heard me state before that the city of Minneapolis is a municipal corporation that exists within the state of Minnesota. It's organized and operates under the provisions of a Home Rule Charter. This slide attempts to visualize that legal and policy framework. So as you can see on that slide, the framework is derived from and is determined by an interlocking system of applicable laws. It dictates how formal authority is defined, delineated, and delegated across and within the city government, how decisions are operationalized, monitored, and evaluated, and how government services are delivered. These various legal authorities are organized in a hierarchy shown on this slide. At the highest and outermost level of the framework are federal and state laws that are applicable to the city. Within that outermost level is the city's charter. As you've heard before, the city charter is the city's constitution. It is the primary legal authority under which the city exists and operates. Subordinate to the charter, then, is the city's Code of Ordinances. Where the city charter is our constitution, the Code of Ordinances is the codified body of municipal law enacted by the city. And then, within that, at the innermost level, are the official acts of the city, defined by the charter. These are classified into three categories. First, ordinances, which are essentially municipal statutes. Second, resolutions, which are formal acts that usually relate to municipal priorities, policies, and positions. And then, third, actions. Actions encompass all of the other kinds of official acts that the city does, which are not done by means of an ordinance or a resolution. So as you can see then on this slide, the various levels of applicable laws work like a set of nested bowls, with the federal and state laws at the outermost border and level, and the innermost policy level being those official acts of the city. If you're following along in the guide, I've just covered pages one and two. This part of the framework largely addresses the external-facing policies used by the city for community governance. This slide attempts to provide the same view, but through the lens of government structure. So at the highest level, you can see we have enterprise policies, which are adopted by the city's governing body. The governing body is the council and the mayor working together. The governing body is the combination of the city's Legislative Council and its executive mayor. By state law, every city must have a governing body, and it is this governing body which holds all the powers of a municipal corporation that are delegated by the state to be exercised at the local level. So at that highest level, then again, these enterprise policies are actions taken by the council and the mayor. Enterprise policies are binding on the city enterprise and are applicable to all departments unless specifically provided otherwise. They are the highest level of policy within the enterprise. And just as the city may not take action in conflict with higher levels of legal authority, for example, state and federal laws, so too must all lower levels of policy be within the scope of enterprise policies adopted by the council and mayor. Enterprise policies are intended to establish consistent standards for those matters that have general enterprise-wide applicability within the general policymaking authority of the city council. So you could say enterprise policies are not about operations or management functions, and enterprise policy is essentially a high-level statement of values derived from the city's mission, vision, and purpose. They are used to articulate overall goals, priorities, and objectives to be pursued by the city enterprise, the results or the outcomes to be achieved, and the standards that guide the enterprise in pursuit of those goals, priorities, results, and outcomes. At a macro level, enterprise policies usually are focused on addressing questions that address why, what, and for whom. Enterprise policies are to be made by resolution following the council's standard legislative process. The adopted enterprise policies are to be codified in the city's policy library for universal access. As noted in the guide, the term "universal access" means that the policy is filed with the office of city clerk, is posted in the city's digital policy library, is distributed to all departments, and as public data under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act is available to the public upon request. That takes care of the blue enterprise policies at the top. Below that level of enterprise policies are administration policies. These are shown in green on the slide. Administration policies are within the purview of the mayor and, by extension, the mayor's cabinet of executive officers. An administration policy is a policy issued by the mayor to establish policy or to provide direction, clarity, or instruction to the executive branch, the city's administration, under the mayor's authority pursuant to city charter. An administration policy may be applicable to the entire administration or to specific departments, divisions, and units in the executive branch. Administration policies could be used to address administrative, management, and operational issues, and provide specific guidance or instruction from the mayor. Where enterprise policies focus on questions of why, what, and for whom, administration policies tend to focus on questions about by whom, when, where, how, how much, and other types of management level issues. An administration policy cannot conflict with an enterprise policy, but must operate within the parameters that are created by applicable laws and enterprise policies. Administration policies are promulgated by executive order, and as we have seen and experienced over the past few years, executive orders are made in writing by the mayor, and they become effective once they're filed with the office of city clerk. Administration policies are not official acts of the governing body, so they are not published in the city's official newspaper like enterprise policies are. However, they will be codified in the city's policy library for universal access. This assures both transparency and accountability to the public for executive orders and administration policies. Finally, at the lowest level, department policies are adopted, implemented, and enforced at the department operating level. These policies reflect delegated authority within enterprise and administration policies. They are used to amplify, clarify, or to provide specific direction within the department about the implementation, administration, and enforcement of enterprise or administration policies. They also can be used to establish departmental work rules and standards tied to performance expectations, or to implement the authority that's been delegated to departments to carry out their work. The other piece you'll notice on this slide is the Policy Review Group, or PRG. This is a group that's been created to function as the internal policy review team. This group will be responsible for reviewing, monitoring, making recommendations for, and assuring regular reviews of all enterprise and administration policies. It will manage the internal vetting process for policy proposals and assure regular reviews of all existing policies. The work of the PRG will be facilitated by the city operations officer, and its members will include the city attorney and the city clerk or their designees. It will also include other department representatives to ensure an appropriate balance of perspectives and cross-departmental disciplines are engaged in the city's internal policy development and review processes. So this is the structure anticipated by the new enterprise policy framework reflecting government structure. On this slide, what I've done is add the policies I just described, as you can see, to the right on this slide, so you have the primarily internal-facing policy categories in addition to that basic legal framework that I described earlier. The administration, or the enterprise, administration, and department policies all nest together within the city's official acts, but they're pulled out here on this slide for easy identification and classification purposes. As I noted earlier, you could separate this framework into the primarily external-facing policy functions focused on community governance. Those would be done on the image to the left, and those that are primarily internal-facing functions focused on enterprise direction and regulation, which are those largely focused are shown on the right of this image. The internal-facing policy framework addresses the organization, planning, direction, and oversight of the day-to-day operations of the city and the delivery of the city's services and programs. Together, these two parts of the policy framework work in tandem to provide both community governance and enterprise regulation. That summarizes the overview of the guide to the city's policy framework. Staff, as I mentioned, has prepared a resolution which, if adopted, would accomplish several outcomes which I've already gone over, but listed here in summary. First, it would formally adopt that guide to the city's policy framework as the foundation for the new enterprise policy on policies. At the same time, it would rescind the previous action from 2004, which, as I've noted, is outdated and does not reflect the city's governance structure. Again, the guide is included in your briefing materials and will be attached as an exhibit to the resolution for incorporation by reference. Second, as provided in the guide, the various categories of city policy would be defined, as I've already outlined them for you, which aligns with the new government structure as we discussed. Enterprise policies would be the shared responsibility of the city's governing body. Administration policies would be the mayor's responsibility and, as appropriate, the mayor's cabinet. And department policies would be within the authority delegated to the departments under both enterprise and administration policies and any applicable laws. Third, authority for policy and specific roles and responsibilities are clearly articulated within the guide, which also reflects, as I said, the new government structure. And finally, it authorizes the creation of a new policy review group to serve as the city's internal policy review and evaluation team, as well as the development and maintenance of a city policy library to provide access to city policies. I should also note that the council did allocate or reallocate funds in this year's budget from the Legislative Department to pay for the acquisition of a new enterprise policy management system. That work was foundational to our understanding of what the needs of the enterprise were, and so as the attorney and clerk's offices finalized this work, our intention was to turn to the work of acquiring that new system. We still have the $300,000 that council authorized for the acquisition of that new system in our budget. We have already consulted with President Payne. We anticipate requesting that that money be rolled over so that to the 2026 fiscal year budget, so that we can complete the work of procuring that new system with the already allocated funds. So this slide then outlines anticipated next steps for the project. As you can see, once we have the new framework formally adopted, we expect that before the end of this year, staff will accomplish two major objectives. First, we'll formally establish the policy review group so that it can carry forward the rest of this project. Second, we'll bring forward, as I just noted, the budget amendment to carry forward the existing project funds so that work to acquire a new system to manage enterprise policies can be completed in 2026. As soon as we establish the policy review group, we anticipate that we'll be organizing two working groups that represent multiple departments. The first work group will be responsible for leading the acquisition, configuration, and implementation of that new enterprise policy management system. The second team will be tasked with identifying and collecting all existing policies and classifying them according to this new framework. Neither of those scopes of work will be completed in the next two months. Rather, we will organize those work groups, and those work groups will proceed working in parallel into 2026. And then, looking into the next year, steps four, five, and six, we anticipate by the second quarter, we would be working on completing implementation and launch of our new enterprise policy management system and the creation of the new digital policy library. Once those systems are in place, we'd begin the work of putting the reclassified existing policies into the policy library after running them through the new policy management system. That will no doubt consume much, if not all, of 2026. I fully anticipate council will remain keenly interested in the progress of this project, and to that end, I would expect the PRG would be making regular reports on a regular cadence to the appropriate committee once council has organized and established its new committee structure for the 2026-2029 term, which, as we know, will happen in January. With that, Mr. Chair, I've completed my presentation. I'm happy to respond to questions the committee might have.
Thank you. First pass it to Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Question for you, Clerk Carl. How does this relate to the government structure implementation ordinance that we're having a public, that's being referred to staff at the same time that President Payne's also authoring?
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Cashman, there's no direct tie to the ordinance that council president has given notice of that's being referred to staff. This is really related to the work of policy development, bringing forward policy proposals, and then implementing policies adopted by the governing body, the council and the mayor. So this is reflecting the government structure and how those policies are defined, but would be necessary in terms of day-to-day operations regardless of the government structure. So as an example, we already have a policy in place that was adopted in 2004, I noted, which provides a policy on policies and a process. That policy is outdated and does not reflect government structure. This new one would rescind that previous one and put in place a new process that does reflect the new government structure and which then also would provide how the administration brings forward policy proposals, reviews those proposals on a regular basis, and maintains them for access both
them for access both internally to the enterprise and externally to the public.
Okay. And then how does the policy review group, what was the composition of that from the 2020, 2004 policy on policies?
I don't have the act in front of me, but my memory of that, when I came in 2010, it was still in existence. There was a group of departments identified based on structure and function, those departments who had a touch on enterprise-wide operations. And so it included, as an example, the finance officer, the HR director, the IT director, and it was a group co-chaired by what was then the city coordinator, now the city operations officer, and the city clerk. And so that group was responsible for facilitating the internal review processes when policies were being proposed, in terms of making sure the appropriate departments internal to the enterprise reviewed and vetted and gave feedback before a policy proposal made its way up the chain to the city council for consideration.
Well, is, am I correct in understanding that not all policies go to the city council for consideration under the new government structure?
Through the chair, Councilmember Cashman, you are correct. And that is not a change based on government structure. In the, before government structure, there were authorities delegated to two departments to make department-level policies. So the change in this one is that administration policies, shown in green, enterprise policies existed in the 2024 model, and department policies operated in the 2004 model, I should say. What we've done is, in reflection of government structure, added the administration policies, which are reflected both in the charter and the Code of Ordinances.
Okay. I think my hang-up here then is that council's not, doesn't have a seat on the policy review group. If it's including the administrative policies passed by council, ordinances that the council passes, it seems that the council should have a role in shaping the way that they're rolled out, at least from an oversight perspective, which is one of our core functions, and transparency perspective, which is another of our core functions. Is there a reason that there's no council seat on the policy review group?
Through the chair, Councilmember Cashman, yes, it's a staff group. And so the council's interests are represented by the clerk, who stands for, as the department head of the Legislative Department. All policies of an enterprise nature, enterprise policies, would come through the council's legislative process and go to the appropriate standing committee, and ultimately for adoption by the full council. So the policy review group is a staff group. And as I noted, it would be facilitated by the city operations officer, who represents, let's say, two-thirds of the administration, and would include representation from the city attorney and the city clerk, which represent the city's legal officer and then the head of the Legislative Department at a staff level.
Got it. Thanks.
So we have Vice Chair Choudhury.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Carl, for the presentation. So this, based off of the response to Councilmember Cashman's question, this is basically a replacement from the existing 2004 policy. It's rescinding that.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Could you detail again what's in the 2004 policy and how that is not in sync with current government structure?
Certainly, through the chair. The current structure, if you're looking at the slide in front of you, again, wouldn't include the green administration policies. There were citywide or enterprise policies that were adopted by the council and the mayor together as the city's governing body. The PRG existed in the 2004 model, just as it's proposed to continue existing here. Its role was to facilitate the internal review, vetting, and evaluation of existing or proposed policies, and to make sure that all of the perspectives of departments impacted by policy proposals were brought forward to the council as part of its consideration. Department policies are those policies which deal with work expectations and which clarify the direction of implementing and administering policies at the department level within operations through the authority delegated to them by the mayor and council. So the difference here again is adding in the recognition of government structure, that the mayor, as the chief executive officer, has the authority under the charter to issue directions and orders to the administration. And we, through the code, have codified that as the issuance of an executive order. And by executive order, the mayor then promulgates what are labeled "administration policies." So that's the one change from the 2004 model to the 2024 model, or I should say, the 2025 model.
Is that, is there a policy review group currently meeting?
Through the chair, Councilmember Choudhury, there is a policy review group. It doesn't really meet. It's been active for many, many years. Occasionally, when there's a significant policy that's new, the group is convened by email. A draft is circulated to those members, and a request is made. Do you have any issues with this proposed policy?
Who's on the current makeup of that?
It changes based on what the policy is. So if it has a heavy involvement in personnel matters or human resource matters, then the HR director would be involved in that. But as a regular routine, it's coordinated through the city operations officer. There are attorney and clerk representation on the group. I myself, from the clerk's office, am on that group.
Okay. And then for the public that's following along, and then also even for myself, what are examples of high-level enterprise policies? So we can define that a little bit. That separates it from like the Code of Ordinance updates that we do.
The policy in front of you right now, the attorney can also add, but I would suggest the policy on policies is, for example, an enterprise policy that sets forth, this is our expectation, these are the directions, and here's the process on how enterprise policies will be developed and maintained, brought forward, once they're adopted, where they'll be placed in the policy library, and how often they'll be reviewed and brought forward to the council. So that's an example of an enterprise policy, but the attorney probably has more to offer.
Councilmembers, another really recent one is the ADA Title II policy that you all passed, which is about providing reasonable accommodation to residents and other individuals who interact with this city. And so, I mean, that's again, an enterprise policy. It affects the, kind of the rights of members of the public. And, yeah, I mean, and so that's, you know, we crafted that policy with this whole framework in mind.
Okay. Thank you. Would we be able to add the 2004 policy to the LEMS file, since we're rescinding it, or the item proposes rescinding it and replacing it with this?
If we haven't, through the chair, I'll say we will. I know I sent it around with the email that I circulated to all of you, so it's easy for me to retrieve, and happy to add that.
Okay. Great. That's all my questions for right now.
Thank you. And can you remind us, so for the PRG component, delegating the authority to conduct internal reviews, who's delegating the authority?
Council is delegating authority for the enterprise policies which fall within its scope of its jurisdiction as the governing body, down to the departments, the policy review group, that this is the system that would be in place for the development and the presentation of enterprise policies.
So the city council would be delegate, like, taking away its power on this?
No. Final authority for all enterprise policies still remains. This is literally the staff work to generate, review, bring forward recommendations, provide input from the professionals who are the subject matter experts in the administration, so that your policy work is informed by them.
Okay. But what would be the difference between our regular process now, where we develop stuff and staff always gets, can give input, and they do so with emails, calls, you name it? I guess that's my, yeah, it's a question I have.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I would say this is a formal process that the city enterprise would follow with respect to policies. We also have a similar process, as you know, with respect to ordinances, which would be public-facing laws. Enterprise policies really are about the enterprise operation. And so this is within the scope of the governing body's authority, the delegation of staff to say, we want a consistent process that operates in this way for when policies are proposed, how that subject matter is developed, how it is reviewed, the internal vetting and evaluation process, and ultimately a recommendation to the council through its appropriate standing committee. So it really is sort of mirroring the existing process you're used to and how actions come to all of your committees, but specifically providing how that operates for enterprise policies.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Wonsley.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. More so of comments that I think is building upon, like, inquiry that I'm hearing from my colleagues in starting off with the question raised by Councilmember Cashman in terms of, it sounds like there's an interest to see, in addition to the delegation of staff through the city clerk's office on the legislative side, to support the work of this policy review group of having some designation of a council other liaison on it. I don't know if it's leadership or whatever that might be. But I would love to have more conversations ahead of Thursday to figure out what that could include, or if there's something more needed for the reporting piece to kind of satisfy. I think there's a sheer, just like, desire for representation amongst council around that, or on that policy review group. So I just wanted to note, like, that was my original question, but I'm hearing that also be reiterated by my colleagues, and hope we could find some type of resolution before Thursday.
Council President Payne.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. The clerk spoke to this. Some of this is coming from my intention to build a policy library, because we just don't even know where all of our policies are. But I think embedded in this kind of, perhaps, software project is a bigger question about power and authority and council's authority to create enterprise policies, because I think that that's been something that's been contested on a topic-by-topic basis. And so, you know, this original work kind of grew out of trying to create more clarity around this. And then even, I would say, the initial draft of this was closely replicating the original 2004 policy, which was largely led by the city coordinator. And we shifted that language to say facilitated rather than led by in the resolution. I actually did note that we need to update the actual guide to reflect some of those changes, but, and also included the city attorney and the city clerk, so that we had administration, council, and city attorney all at the table. But I'm also very receptive to a lot of the questions here, because I've been working with the clerk on this for a year or so, but this is maybe a little bit new. Mr. Clerk, could you just say, in terms of timeline, is there urgency to getting this passed right now, or is there time for me to work with my colleagues to better reflect some of their intentions?
Through the chair, council president, I would say that the ability to meet the timeline is the urgent piece. The most urgent piece, of course, is the rollover of the funding to acquire a system. That funding was in this year's budget. It's been saved, hasn't been spent. Of course, under financial policies, if we don't rollover, we lose that money, and then we will not be buying a system. So of course, as I've mentioned to you, of highest priority for me is capturing the monies that were already allocated in this year's budget by the council for the acquisition of that enterprise-wide system.
Yeah. And I think that's the critical issue here, is that we're not impeding that work moving forward, and we're definitely working together on that budget amendment to ensure that that work doesn't get impeded. So I would actually make a recommendation that we hold this for a cycle. I don't know that we have an extra cycle that might carry us into the next year, but I think that, I don't think that that will, you know, be a devastating blow to the timeline of this project, because I'd like to be able to address everybody's questions and concerns here, to be able to make sure that we're really, because this is really foundational to how we want to operate as a new government structure. So I don't want to have people feeling like this is a rushed process. If we would have had this on the dais, you know, cycle earlier, I think that would have been helpful. But, you know, maybe we can forward this without recommendation, and then if by Thursday there's still more questions, we could maybe hold it. Other, or, Chair, do you have a preference?
You can finish. I'm on cue.
Oh, okay. I'll finish and let Chair Chavez.
Yeah, I'll just make a motion to delay it till the next committee of the whole meeting. I think if we only give ourselves two days, that it's not impossible to address the various concerns on this day. So I'll make a motion if I can get a second.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion to delay this till the next committee of the whole meeting, which is on December 9th, is that correct, at 1:30 p.m.?
Correct.
All right. So there's no discussion. No one's on cue today. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions, the item is delayed to December 9th. All right, colleagues. With that, we've concluded all business to come before the committee today. And hearing no objection, I would declare this meeting adjourned.